Good evening, everyone. It is 6:02 and I call this regular school board meeting to order. Dr. Salazar, do we have people to help us with the pledge of allegiance?
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, we do have students here to help lead us in the pledge. Tonight, we have students from Olmito and Rancho Verde, so here to introduce them are their proud principals. We'll begin with Ms. Jennifer Garcia. Ms. Garcia.
Good evening. First, I'd like to introduce Jimena Chumacero, a talented second grade student at Olmito Elementary School. Jimena is a creative individual with a passion for art, engaging in activities such as drawing, creating educational games, crafting jewelry, and designing paper dolls. She is also an avid reader, enjoying books like Dogman and La Ratita Presumida, and has excelled in oral reading Spanish competitions, securing first place at the district level. Academically, Jimena shines in math and science and approaches learning with enthusiasm and a desire for excellence. Outside of school, she admires her parents and aspires to pursue a career in engineering inspired by her father's expertise in robotics. Jimena also values family connections, particularly during visits to relatives in Mexico. Jimena's willingness to help her classmates and share her creations adds to her standout qualities as a student. She is a significant presence in our school community, and I'm confident she will continue to excel and inspire. All right. Thank you, Jimena. And next, we have Jacqueline Ordonez. Jacqueline is a vivacious second grade student at Olmito Elementary School, known for her creativity and love of learning. She is particularly passionate about drawing, often creating vibrant art pieces, and is an avid reader of some of the same books as her classmate, Jimena. This bilingual ability extends to her academic talents, especially in math and reading, where she absorbs knowledge enthusiastically. Outside the classroom, Jacqueline's life is filled with activities that foster her development in various areas. She enjoys spending time outdoors with her sisters, participating in church events where she sings with her mom and expresses her musical talents. These experiences have inspired her dream of becoming a music teacher. Additionally, her participation in competitions like EAE Spanish, where she placed third place at the district level, showcase her dedication and hard work. Jacqueline's zest for life and learning make her a source of joy and inspiration to everyone around her. Thank you.
At this time, we welcome the proud principal of Rancho Verde Elementary, Ms. Mary Chavez.
Good afternoon. Lucia Esparza is a student I'd like to introduce you to. Lucia Esparza is a fifth grade student at Rancho Verde Elementary. This is actually her first year in our district, so she didn't start at LFC ISD, but she got here as fast as she could. And lucky for us, she is a brilliant student, having been selected for the accelerated honors math and science program for middle school. Aside from excelling in academics, Lucia is also part of the RVE cheer squad, serving as co-captain. Additionally, she is an avid piano player and plans to put her skills to use next year as a member of the RMS Band. Lucia's favorite subject in school is math, and when she grows up, she hopes to become a veterinarian. I have no doubt that this intelligent, outgoing, and outstanding young lady will accomplish any goal she sets for herself. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, these students are here to help lead us in the pledge. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If everyone can remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Castillo, will you call the roll, please? Before we do that, will the parents of the children please stand and be recognized? Thank you. Theo.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ruben Trevino.
Present.
Mr. Donald Henderson.
Present.
I am here, Martin Castillo. Mr. Jesús Amaya.
Present.
A member who made it tonight would be Ms. Sandra Garcia, Ms. Liti Suquintero, Mr. Kevin Montes, and Dr. Gonzalo Salazar.
Present.
Ms. Casey Villanueva.
Thank you. That brings us to Roman numeral five, district presentations, district recognition. Dr. Salazar, we have soccer teams, powerlifting teams, mariachi nuevo jalon, CTERGV livestock champions.
Yes, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, we are having another banner year. We set time aside at each of our meetings once a month, sometimes twice a month, to recognize our students. And here to introduce us to some of our athletes that have experienced a lot of success is our athletic director and head football coach, Mr. David Guntu, coach.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Trevino, Dr. Salazar, members of the board, again, like Dr. Salazar mentioned, it's been a great year, a banner year, a lot of success, and these particular groups you're going to meet today, all representing Los Fresnos in the postseason in different ways. And you'll meet our soccer teams, both boys and girls, and our powerlifting team. We'll start with our soccer teams. Oh, I'm sorry. Right behind me is head coach Michael Miller.
Good evening, Dr. Salazar, Madam President, board, and esteemed guests. My name is Michael Miller. I'm the proud coach of Los Fresnos Boy Soccer, and with me is my assistant, Miguel Garcia, who's also a kindergarten teacher at Los Fresnos Elementary. This season brought many challenges, but also many accomplishments. As a team, we finished here with 15 wins, eight losses, and six ties. Couple of highlights from our season included a second-place finish at the Border Olympics Tournament in Laredo, victory over Brazos Rivetta, which was also their first loss at home in over two years, and a second-place finish in district for the second-straight season and program-record fifth-straight playoff appearance. I just want to introduce the boys that are here today, starting with a freshman who was also nominated as newcomer of the year and led our team in scoring this year, in goal scoring, Gio Barrientos. We have sophomore and first-year varsity player, Joe Ortiz. Sophomore, second year as a varsity player, also selected as a second-team all-district defender, Manny Silva. Next, we have junior, first-year varsity player, also selected as a first-team all-district midfielder, Miguel Alvarez. Junior, first-year varsity player, selected first-team all-defense, Vicente Tamayo. Junior, second-year varsity, first-team all-district goalkeeper, also was named to the all-tournament team at the Border Olympics, Nico Moreno. Senior, third-year varsity player, second-team all-district midfielder, is going to go to Texas Lutheran to study criminal justice, Aiden Lopez. Senior, second-year varsity player, planning on attending Texas Southmost College, Alan Aviedo. And senior, third-year varsity player, second-team all-district forward, also planning on attending Texas Southmost College, J.J. Contores. Just a thank you to Coach Guntu, rest of the administration, Mr. Stumball, and the rest of the administration at Los Fresnos High School. We appreciate everything you do for us and all the athletic programs at LFHS.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you all. Thank you, Coach Miller. Next, we have our girls' soccer team. Our girls' soccer program did an amazing job in Coach Jessica Montero's first year. Now, Coach Jessica Montero is at the all-district meeting tonight, so there's a conflict, so we have assistant coach William Thompson here to represent girls' soccer.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Salazar, Mr. President, members of the board, esteemed guests. As Coach Guntu says, I am William Thompson. I am the varsity first assistant girls' coach for the program. I am pleased to say that in our first year, the girls had a really good season. We did have some challenges. As Dr. Guntu said, we actually did have a complete change in the entire staff of the program. But the team finished with an overall record this year of 12 wins, nine losses. They placed second in the district, and we advanced to the area round also of the playoffs. We're very proud of all of our girls. Most of them couldn't make it because of other commitments, but I would like to do some of the members that were able to make it today. We have sophomore goalkeeper number one, Tatiana Estrada. Sophomore forward number nine, Madison Harris. Sophomore defensive back number 16, Kaylee Garcia. And senior number 17 winger and forward, Aaron Insinia. I would just like to say thank you. Thank you to both principals, Mr. Stumball and Ms. Pineta, our athletic director, Coach Guntu, and the rest of the administration at both LFHS and LFU for all the support we received this year and the rest of the programs at both campuses. Thank you for your time.
And just so you know, Mr. Thompson is also a physics teacher at Los Fresnos High School. Okay, Coach, if you can get him up for a picture with the girls. Awesome. Thank you, girls, and congratulations. Great job. Great job. Well, if there's one group in Los Fresnos that brings an incredible amount of pride, it's our powerlifting team, and the amount of consistency they've had and the success they've had is, it's hard to put into words, but I'll let Coach Vela do it. Head coach Jaime Vela.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar. Thank you, Board President. Thank you, board members, for having us here today. I have the privilege of introducing our 2023-2024 girls' regional and state qualifiers, and among them, we had 10 girls placed fifth or better at regionals, we had eight state medalists, and we had three individual state champions. And along with all that, we are a nine-time, nine-time in a row, girls' 6A state champions. I can't tell you how proud I am. Every day, day in and day out, these girls are in the weight room, summers, spring break, Christmas vacation, Thanksgiving vacation, they lived in the weight room. They're the epitome of what we call individuals just live in the gym, okay? You're gym rats. They're just there every day. They call me sometimes, and they're like, "Coach, are we going to open the weight room at whatever?" And I'm just like, "Guys, I need like an hour off. Like, give me a second, right?" So they're always in the weight room. Can't keep them out of there, and it shows. Nine times in a row, I'm just going to go ahead and introduce you, some of them, some of them have proud commitments, but these young ladies here, very proud of them, starting with Clarissa Rodriguez. She is a two-time state champion. Broke the squat record with a 330 squat and a total record of 770 pounds. That squat, bench, and deadlift combined for 770 pounds at the state competition. Victoria Rodriguez placed third place at state. Both of these young ladies were in the 97-pound weight class. Next up, Allison Saavedra, sixth place at state. Cheyenne was a regional qualifier for us, did an excellent job. She had one year of powerlifting under her belt, one full year, so she did a tremendous job. Ariana Marine, fifth place at state. And Michaela Atkinson, fourth place at state. These young ladies are the epitome of our program. Our older girls always teach our younger girls, and I will be remiss if I don't talk about our boys' program. We had four boys' state qualifiers, and they are also, we could not do, and these girls could not do anything without those boys. We do take a lot of kids to our meets. The boys have to wrap the girls' knees, and the girls do the same for the boys at boys' meets, and could not do this without them, and they all have proud commitments, so they're not here. But understand that we are one unit. They work together. We can't be one without the other. So thank you very much.
One thing worth mentioning is Clarissa Rodriguez. Clarissa, you met her first. She'll actually continue to lift at UT San Antonio, so good luck in college doing that. Congratulations, girls. Congratulations, Coach. Thank you all once again for allowing athletics to be a part of this ceremony and this event and this day. And now, I'm going to introduce you to our Los Fresnos High School principal, Mr. Justin Stumball.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. It's been a great year athletically, but it's also been a great year for us on the fine art side. You've heard in some of our prior board meetings, are some of our talented band students. Well, tonight, we're going to focus on our talented mariachi nuevo jalon. And to do that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Andy Saloyz, our music director.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Salazar. Thank you for having us this evening, being able to celebrate some of the successes of our fantastic mariachi program. I'd like to invite Ms. Ramaya, our director of mariachi, to the podium to tell us a little bit about what they've been doing and their successes for this season.
Hello, President, members of the board, Dr. Salazar, thank you so much for having us. On behalf of Mr. Gauzín, who couldn't be here right now, he's working with our JV students at the moment, on behalf of Mr. Gauzín and myself, we want to say how grateful we are for the support that we receive for our program. Some of the things that we'll be discussing this year is that this was the ninth consecutive year that we have qualified to the state contest for UIL, and out of those nine years, this is the eighth year that we received the first division at the UIL State, one of the highest awards that our students can receive. On top of that, our trumpet section and our violin section received outstanding individual performer medals. Just this past weekend, just last night, yesterday, we got back from San Antonio from the state Tame competition, that is a ranking competition. Our students ranked amongst the 6A schools in the state, they ranked third once again. And so, we just want to bring our individual students up, and their names are as follows: Mr. Cruz Acuña. Mari Cruz Arrendades. Leonel Vallesteros. Andres Beltrán. Our armonía section leader and group leader, Luis Beltrán. Lizeth Castro. Carlos Contreras. Genesis Contreras. Our violin and another student group leader, Jenna DeAgvin. Valeria Gonzalez. Victoria Juárez. Ian Maldonado. Adrian Villanueva. Astrid Martínez. He couldn't be here today, but Mr. Gustavo Martínez. Our trumpet section leader, Leonardo Méndez III. Valerie Ochoa. Valentin Paz. Luis Manny Pérez. Victoria Rivera. And one of our vocal section leaders, Leslie Rodríguez. Thank you all so very much for all your help and support, Mr. Stumball as well, and Mr. Saloyz, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Saloyz.
Our final student recognition group will be our FFA students that made the sale of champions at the Mercedes Livestock Show. If you've ever been out there, a lot of these students are out there Wednesday of spring break, all the way through the end of spring break, so they put a lot of hard work and energy into their student projects, and their reward is being recognized at the sale of champions. And so, to introduce our students who made that recognition, our FFA lead instructor, Edna Sánchez, and our other, and our FFA teacher, Ashley Getta.
Good evening, and thank you all for having us here. So we'll start off with the, we wanted to start off with the breeding, but the young lady didn't make it, but so we're going to start off with the market steers, and we have a young man, remarkable young man, who really outshined this year, and his name is Nicolás Ruiz. And Nicolás Ruiz was a Class 7, I'm sorry, a Class 21 AOB medium heavy weight with his AOB meaning exotic, okay? All other breeds, it's an exotic breed. He placed first in his class and overall champion with his AOB at RGVLS. Now, also Nicolás, go ahead, Nicolás. Now, it doesn't stop there. Nicolás also had a second steer, and he had a Charley cross, and he made his way up to Austin, and in Austin, he placed ninth, just barely made, did not make the sale for about four, four or five steers. So he decided to load up, and he headed to Houston, where he won champion overall with that Charley cross. Next, we have Athena, and Athena had some beautiful Californian rabbits. This was her first year, and she decided to try something out with rabbits. Athena placed third, so she was able to make that sale. Now, Athena, Athena, what did you make in that sale with your rabbits? Do you remember the price? $800.
All right, now introducing our market lamb division. We're going to start off by breed classifications, and our first one is our Dorper breed section, and Olivia Lugo here got second place. Now, this lamb weighed 140-some pounds by the end of Mercedes. It's a big lamb for a Dorper. And Olivia, do you remember how much you made for RGVLS? $1,000. Next one, we have Julián Díaz. Julián over here showed a fine wool cross. His cross weighed about 140 pounds, too. Julián, was it $1,000 bucks as well? All right. Our last one we had is Stephanie Iracheta, and Stephanie here got third place with her medium wool, weighed 95 pounds. And she gained back $1,000 bucks as well. Our market hogs, we're going to go ahead and skip that one. Shop projects, we had several in shop projects. Both girls had two projects each. Now, shop projects, I will tell you, it's a lot of dedications, of course, because, one, woodwork. Woodwork, you have to sand it down properly, get those nice soft edges, and the technology that these girls put into the projects, making sure that those little RFD chips work on and off, and then regain the money back. So Chloe over here did home furniture. She got first place. At the same time, Chloe did a metal art project, and I will tell you, that metal art project, I loved it.
Beautiful.
It was really time-designed and effort into that project. It shined, nice work, paint and everything. And then, we have tabletop cut board with Karli, and at the same time, did she do another one? I thought it was another one.
She had her wood furniture. She had her wood furniture, and she had her cutting board.
And then, there's... It was just first-place cutting board.
Now, yes, some of them did get some revenue back, and that, really and truly, that's what these children look at to try to make the sale, but they gain more than that. I mean, if you really look at what they put into that animal, their heart and soul, it does not make up for what they actually get in the sale. They don't do this just because they're looking to get a buck. They do it because they love to do it. It's in their heart, it's in their soul, and they enjoy it. And they take so much experience out of those seven months that they've raised that animal, whether it was a market steer, a breeding heifer, a goat, a lamb, a rabbit, okay? The experience cannot be taken from them, and so we're very proud of these individuals. Thank you. them. And so, we're very proud of these individuals. So, thank you all.
That'll conclude our district recognitions. Congratulations to everyone. Next, we've got public audience. No one has signed up for public audience or public comment. That brings us to Roman numeral eight, district reports. Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, this evening, we present to you our financial reports. Each month, we bring you financial reports, and I'd like to point out that our tax collections, sometimes we're up, sometimes we're down. At this meeting, we're a little, we're down from where we'd like to be, but we're going to keep monitoring that and bring, continue to bring you reports on that. There's also been a change in our capital project fund, where we have now encumbered the amount that, for the purchase order for the construction of our Performing Arts Center, which is really moving along really nicely. Our dual language academy update, I'd like to call on Mrs. Samato, some highlights, just highlights of the...
Thank you, Dr. Salazar. Mostly on the updates is, we're getting ready. We, this year, we did Kinder in first, and we're looking forward to promoting our dual language academy into this second grade next year. The ladies, our bilingual director, Mrs. Villarreal, along with our bilingual strategist, have worked, been working very hard with our teachers in the curriculum, in designing curriculum. We also know that our emergent bilinguals and our non-emergent bilinguals, it's about a 50-50, if not, it's about a 60-40, but we've seen a really good response from both, our parents in the emergent bilinguals and the non-emergent bilinguals. So, we're excited as it continues down our next grade level.
Thank you, Mrs. Samato. I know members of cabinet and I have been doing classroom visits during our literacy block, and it's been so much fun to see non-native Spanish speakers picking up on the Spanish and, and our, and pronouncing, and comprehending what they're reading. So, it's been very cool to see all kids benefit from this program. The next report we have actually belongs to the board, so federal advocacy summit recap. We're going to turn things over this time to Mr. Hishamaya and Mr. Donald Henderson. I believe that your presentation's coming up there. Thank you, Ms. Canales.
Mr. President, thank you for allowing us to report on this, and thank you for allowing us to go. Lucky for me, it was the second time I went, and I'm going to finish with telling, I think that Mr. Henderson will, will agree with me that if we can get somebody there, it's, it's not just big for, for us in our learning process, but to be able to show our representative and our senators that we do care what happens in Region One. Sometimes, they, they leave us off all maps, whether it's a weather map, whether it's any kind of map. You don't see us on there. Well, when it comes to this, they do see us, and they, they do hear us, so I think that was really important. What I've, what you see up there is, the agenda, it was Monday, February the 11th, so we flew out on Superbowl Sunday, got there, I don't know, two or three in the afternoon. We knew that there was going to be some, some time that afternoon, so we took advantage of it and walked over to the Holocaust Museum, and we were able to take that in two or three hours. And it was a long walk, but it was well worthwhile when we came back. On Monday, that's what you see, some of them are highlighted, and that's what I'll go over tonight. And, and then on Tuesday, what you do is, we're no longer with them. It's the day on the Hill, and we go to Capitol Hill, and we meet with our representative, and then we, they had one meeting set up with, with Senator Cornyn. It took us so long to see our representative, Vicente, hold on, Gonzalez. We got there a little bit early. Mr. Henderson's an early riser, and we thought we were going to get arrested for sitting out in the hall because we didn't look. We would just sit out in the hall for a while. But by the time we got through with their office, then the time to meet the group over at the Senate Building was a little bit late, so we were able to go into the Capitol and take a, a short tour of the Capitol before we had to get on a plane and come back. So, it was quite fruitful for us. So, thank you again for letting us go. The, the very first speaker we had that day was a lady by the name of Sasha Pludelski, I believe. She's the Director of Advocacy for AASA, and now I think it's Superintendent, it's called something else now, but American Association of School Administrators is what it used to be called. I bring this up because she had a lot of slides and a lot of information, but she was talking about, about finance, and you can see, this slide, I think, it kind of encapsulated everything that she was trying to, the points she was trying to make there. And on the left, you see Title I, IDEA, Title II, the Impact Aid, which I had to, I didn't know what Impact Aid was, and REAP, so I had to look those up after, after the session with her. But the Impact Aid is, goes to students that live on federal land, mostly Native Americans. They don't have access to a lot of the tax funding that the rest of us have, so that Impact Aid is to help them. And, and the REAP is the Rural Educational Achievement Project Program, and is part of ESSA as well. So, I didn't know those, those programs before this meeting, but you can see what the funding was last year. You can see for fiscal year 24, what the Senate plans and what they think that they're going to, they project their funding will be, and, and what the House plans. On Title I, it looks like the Senate's going to add up to 175 million, but the House looks like they're going to take 15-point, 14.5 billion away. So, that's a net loss of a lot of money. IDEA, looks like there's no, they're, they're, the Senate, again, 175 million that they added, but it was level funding on the House side. Title II, we lost a little bit, or they project we're going to lose in the House, level funding on the Senate, and, and so on. Impact Aid, level funding on the House side again, with adding 10 million in the Senate, and it goes from there, the Rural Education Achievement Plan. So, there's a lot of other items that were discussed, especially when it came to the federal departments and Care of Student Mental Health Act. This is a, this one does have bipartisan support. It's created to provide a pipeline for school-based health personnel, and number two, to give grants to high-needs LEAs, local education agencies, to hire and retain school mental health professions. I know that there's been a professionals, there is a big fight for the, the few certified mental health professionals that are out there. So, this program is intended to help school districts be able to get, to get their services. ESSR, they talked a lot about ESSR, but one of the things, and there's a, there's a whole bunch of slides on, on what schools were, were spending money on. But the biggest message there was, do not depend on any federal extensions to spend them. That should be money and not Monday, and I copied their slide directly, so I, I should have caught that up, or caught that, excuse me. Title now, Title IX rule changes proposed prohibiting discrimination for any student based on gender identity or sexual orientation, and focus on categorical bans on transgender student participation in sports. The U.S. Department of Education is still saying that they expect the rule to be finalized in June, but only for the first one, prohibiting the discrimination for any student based on gender identity, sexual orientation. The other one did not get out of committee, I guess. And finally, the new medical, school-based claiming guide, there's been a big talk with SHARs and everything, Medicare, Medicaid trying to get money reimbursed, but this is to encourage every state to expand Medicaid to students without an IEP, so non-special ed students, and make it much easier for districts to assess medical reimbursement and bill for services. There's, there seems to be some momentum even in Texas on that. Twenty-five states have already done that, but even in Texas, what they were thinking that there was some momentum even in our state, so hopefully that comes through. Just to, what she said was connect the dots, SHARs, which is Student Health and something Services, Related Services, Related Services. Reimbursement issue highlights, why new federal guidelines was needed. There's an opportunity or silver lining on the CMS guide, what we just talked about, will require Human Health Services Committee to make changes to simplify the billing process. There's quite a bit of confusion on this, on this compliance issue, so they are addressing that. In addition, there seems to be some momentum, just like I stated in the state, in this state, for following 25 other states and allowing districts to bill for non-IEP services. And finally, in the interim, litigation may be pursued against Health and Human Services for not accurately advising districts of billing practices. We went on, our thing, our next speaker came up and talked a little bit about E-Rate, Learning Without Limits, had to do with buses, and beginning in January, districts can apply for using their E-Rate dollars for Wi-Fi on buses. The next proposed rule updates, this was on nutritional standards. The implementation is scheduled for school year 2425 with full implementation by school year 2930. A lot of it had to do with getting down to the addition of subtraction of certain elements, the subtraction of sugar, and finally, putting a limit on sugar, and there were some other things discussed there. This lady, Marguerite Droso, she's a professor at Georgetown. She was very articulate, brought a lot of things to, to, to focus for us. She had a lot of slides too, but what I wanted to get to is, she is predicting, as she refers it, a bloodletting next school year, because school districts, even the state of Texas, did not heed the warning of putting ESSR funds into recurring expenditures. And there's, I, I don't know if I put that slide up, but we'll look at it and just, I think, I might have. ESSR is boosting spending when, but then ends abruptly in September. Most at risk are the districts using ESSR for reoccurring financial commitments via budget back filing, new hires or permanent raises. Another, these are the four issues she says is going to lead to the bloodletting. Enrollment declines means fewer revenues in the long run, inflation, labor scarcity, and new hiring are driving up recurring commitments. And finally, an economic slowdown would affect growth in state's revenues. That is what she's predicting. Net impact of our typical financial shocks on public education, and that's how she refers to it as a bloodletting in 2425. Not for everyone, but those four factors are going to lead to a, a sharp decrease in funding, especially if you use your, your ESSR funds in a way that you are warned not to use them. Here it is, I did put it up there, you can see that. Texas districts are spending it at a faster percentage than the national average. Look at payroll and, and the use of, of ESSR funds, 63% of the funds are going that way. I don't know what ours is, but I would dare to guess it's much less than that. Districts are most likely to invest ESSR funds in payroll costs. Payroll costs include new higher salary raises, stipends, bonuses, and benefits pay. The, the one thing that she went on, I'm going to, I'm going to skip this slide because the next slide says basically the same thing, and this is what I, I found interesting, is that when we're going to, when we're going to talk about funding to whomever's listening to us, whoever the audience is, there's dos and don'ts to get your point across, and, and don't say reallocation, say leveraging dollars to do more for students. Don't say efficiency, admit the trade-off. We could have done X or Y, and we chose Y because it helps us do Z for our students. Don't say do more with less, spending is smarter. Acknowledge the cut, as just that, a cut. Communicate your, your dollar amounts, and finally, we were told we had to, but instead of saying that, saying, we have the flexibility to make trade-offs that meet the needs of our students. So, and I know that that's what our district does, and it's just, it's very important how we, we communicate this to our, our stakeholders and anybody else. I had to leave most of the slides on this presentation off because in fear that we might be sued for electioneering. Yeah, I, I used one slide, but that's, I think that's all I'd used because I was, I was worried about that. It seems like almost anything triggers a, some kind of investigation. Let me see if we, and this is the turnout, and if you look at it, at the top, we are living in a new era of voter turnout. It's not just a matter of who people vote for, but whether or not they decide to vote. And you can see those from 2000 to 2022. I think we were told at Region One, and we were told in Austin, that for the primary elections, I want to say it was either eight or 18% of those that were eligible to vote voted. We've got to do something. We can say get out the vote, get out there and vote. We may not be able to tell them who we think that we might vote for, but we do have to do something about getting, getting our citizens to get out there and vote. That concludes that. We did have, I wanted you to know that Mr. Henderson, we're going to turn it over to him, we took advantage, not just for the Holocaust Museum, but on, on the day we were to go, correct me if I'm wrong, because the first day we started, no, it was on the first day agenda, we got up early, which is a custom of mine. We, and we went to one side of the mall and took the first side of the mall. We started at the Washington Monument, Jefferson Monument, came around to MLK and came back before our meeting started. Of course, he's observing and telling me everything about the architecture. It was cold, I wanted to keep moving. And we did, we came back. We had a little break at the end of the day, I think we finished at 4:30 or 5:00. We weren't going to have dinner with the group until 7:00. So, again, we went for a walk and went through World War II, Vietnam, Korea, went all the way to the Lincoln Monument and came back. So, we were able to see all the monuments there. That was a rainy afternoon too. We got as wet, a couple of times, but it was, it was educational for, for me, and really, it brought forth what, what we need to do on the, on the national level. Let me go back to one thing that may affect some of you, and I didn't mention it because I didn't put a slide in it. You see up there on strengthening social security benefits for retired teachers. Some of you, most of you are not retired, I would think. I am. And that's when you find out a WEP, which is a windfall elimination protocol, procedure, whatever. If you go, if you're lucky enough to have the 40 quarters for, for social security and can collect social security, which I had, when you go to start your social security, they let you know of the windfall elimination proposal, which means, hey, you're already getting a retirement from a, from a fund who is not covered, and you can't have it. We're going to give you half of it. When they call it windfall, I said it more like pennies from heaven, but that's fine, they took half of it. There is bipartisan support for both the, the WEP and the GPO, which is the government, I wrote it down somewhere. What, what this, what this, this bill does, or this law does, is that it also takes away the social security of a spouse, of someone who's getting some other pension. If that person lives, like I have on my TRS, if I die, my, my wife still gets the benefits. Well, if that were to happen, they take her social security away. Yeah, there's a lot of stuff out there. But everyone there seemed to think that this had bipartisan support and would get some change, at least on the WEP, they didn't, at least on the GPO, which has to do with the government taking away the widows or widowers' money if they, they have another pension. It was that side of it, I knew a little bit about it. I didn't know that there was a movement, but since it affects both sides of the aisle, there seems to be some movement in there to try to repeal that. I'm going to turn it over to my, my walking partner, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Maya. I can't add a lot to that, other than let me add some personal color about our whole trip. At the beginning, I wasn't really excited about going to DC on the weekend, Superbowl weekend, to head up there, but I did take the inspiration. I want to share this with all of us at the board. I wish the whole board was here. We've seen Dr. Salazar take the initiative from the board when, I think, 17 years ago, y'all got on the board, and they encouraged him to get out and think outside the box, think Texas, you know, let's have an impact on people more than just in our community, but also the scope of influence is what Dr. Salazar says. And so, I think, so we... And so I think, so we, basically when he invited us.
So when, when Coach Amaya had come back from the advocacy conference last year, he said what a great experience it was, meeting with other Texas advocates in, in Congress and on the Hill in Washington, and it inspired me. So one of the things I take away is that I appreciate Mr. Maya stepping up and providing leadership, and that's what we do here in the school district. We need to mentor each other and have opportunities to, to share with the next generation what's going on so that we don't lose that depth of knowledge. And I think of Halsworth and what Dr. Salasad and the board's doing at Halsworth. I know you're trying to build depths in leadership and that's similar to what Mr. Maya, I think, was doing. So I appreciate him taking me and being patient, taking me on a walking tour at 5:00 in the morning, I appreciate that in DC. It was well worth it. Yep, but, but I learned a lot from that and, and his passion for advocacy. And a lot of times, I want to say this also, a lot of times we think that our job as trustees is just to stay here and keep our heads down and, and review, make sure everything, the policy's in place and do that. But we are also the elected officials. And in Texas, I saw that at the advocacy, we had 70 people in attendance on the Super Bowl weekend, which I think was well, 70 trustees. Most of them, I think, from San Antonio, El Paso, Laredo South. So we're, we're well represented, South Texas, because I think we take interest. We know that this is the time we need to speak up. If we're silent, we will not be heard. And the oil, the, the oil gets, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. And so we were all up there doing that. So I think that was very important that we do stand up as elected official, that we do speak to our congressmen and senators and tell them, we are here, we need to speak up for education. If we believe in public education, we have to take the stand and we need to reach out and represent our constituents and let them know that we're not asleep. So I know I'm getting off the subject, but that's all that I learned from, from there. Also, the last thing, we always break bread at dinner. We walked down, everyone took Ubers, it was raining, but Mr. Maya in a small umbrella suggested we walk. So we walked down two car mines to meet the rest of the delegation. It was a great walk.
We caught the small umbrella.
And we made it there, a little wet, but we made it. But breaking bread with the other 70 members that evening, we were able to communicate with some of the board members from another neighboring school district. They also had three, we had two. We were able to kind of build some rapport that was missing and work on the idea of building advocacy together. And so that was another thing, just breaking bread and taking those moments so that we can keep going forward. Because again, if we don't step up like what Dr. Salasad is doing right now in Austin and what Mr. Maya is doing on Tasbi, when they are not here, what's going to happen? So again, that's my takeaway, enjoyed it. I appreciate Mr. Maya taking the time to mentor and share that. And I encourage all our board to consider going to, it's well worthwhile, what we learn. Again, in DC, everything moves slowly is what they told us. But if they hear from us, if they see we're interested, we can have an impact, maybe not next year, or maybe even our lifetime, but years down the road, we have to show up. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We, the one, one of the ones that we got the most to speak to is, we got to speak to the Assistant Secretary of the Department of Education, Ricardo Rodriguez, I think it is his name. He's a Texan. He knows our issues. So I think that he volunteered from the, from the United States Department of Education to speak to this group. A very articulate young man, but we got to speak to him afterwards for quite a while. He really explained what, he gave us the speed of what's going on out there and, and what's facing us, especially public education in the next years to come. So that was a, something I didn't mention here, he, he would, it was a wide range of topics that he talked about, but that was very interesting as well. And the fact that he took the time to talk to us, it was only South Texas people that he was speaking to at the end.
And on, on that note, we even, while we're there, again, I appreciate Mr. Maya, he knew a lot of people because of his involvement in Tasbi. I don't know how many years ago that started, but we need to be involved more in that is what I came away with. But we even came.
The congressman's office has reached out. They will be in our district on the 22nd. We'll sit down and visit about issues pertaining to public education and they're going to be touring our schools, so.
Who's going to be coming down?
Congressman.
Very good. So that brings us to number four under district reports. That would be Legislative Advocacy Committee Meeting Update, and that would be me. So I am now part of the LAC. I was nominated to become part of that committee and representing Los Fresnos at the, at the state level. So we've heard from the federal side of things and we're being involved there. And so on the state side of things, I'm involved there representing Los Fresnos. And it's been, it's been very eye-opening. It's been a very good experience. The information that I have to report, we have developed 10 goals, I believe, 10, 12 goals. But the ones that I really feel that, that we are going to focus on is increasing the basic allotment. That's something that's really important. Teacher recruitment and retention is up there as well. And then of course, we have security. And so there's so many, so many times the, the state will come up and give us these unfunded mandates with, with security and safety. And so we're really going to fight hard on making sure that we can get some reimbursement from the state to ensure, because all of that has come out of our general fund. And so we're very cognizant of safety. We've done administration and all of our campuses have done an outstanding job on making sure that we have passed all of our inspections and them trying to breach our schools. We pray that we never get to the point where, you know, that comes into play, but we're ready. And I, I really wanted to take this time to thank administration, the schools, principals for their hard work in this because it's really, really important and lives are dependent upon that. So the other thing I wanted to, to mention was that April 20th, I will be going up to Austin and also participating at a meeting in Austin to discuss the initiatives that we have and really represent Los Fresnos in that. So I am one of the. Go ahead.
You're being a little bit modest. You say you're representing Los Fresnos and we know that you will, but you're one of the Region One representatives on, on the LAC. They're going up to Austin, there's I think 130 something members from throughout the state. They're going to whittle that down to, I believe, four that will, will be, take part of the Legislative Advisory Committee of Tasbi, which I am currently on. But what amazes me is because of Sylvia's leadership, Sylvia Garza from South Texas, and what she's been able to do with, after grassroots, the young people took over, well, Sylvia's young as well, took over. And there was a groundswell, there really was, it has not stopped. They had a meeting, they had a meeting in Brownsville, we had a meeting in, in Mercedes. They're preparing because one of their goals was to get a Region One LAC representative on the, on the smaller LAC, on the Tasbi LAC. So they're, they're preparing. When, when Doc Gonzalez was down here, we even asked him, you know, what's it going to take? How do we get somebody on? He gave us some advice, but the fact that Tasbi sent Doc Gonzalez down here for Region One for, it wasn't a grassroots meeting, it was something that y'all did and just came up with and kept that momentum going. I think that says a lot, and it says a lot to Tasbi, what's going on with Region One.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that. We, we are, we're on fire and we want to continue to stay that way. And so what I wanted to do is also, some of the news isn't, isn't very, very good as far as this last election cycle. We lost a lot of people that were pro-public schools and so it's difficult, it's going to be a difficult fight. And we've got a fight on our hands. And I really want to send out the alarm bells to our teaching community. We have got to go out and vote and we have got to get our friends to go out and vote and we have got to become active in this thing because if not, it is a scary, scary business that, that we're in right now. If we let things go by the wayside, we, you will be shocked, I guarantee you. And it is, it, it's getting extremely difficult right now, and you all know it because you're on the ground floor here, to, to get teachers and highly qualified teachers. We have got to go out to the polls and get everybody that we know to go and vote because if we don't, we will be shocked. I can guarantee you that. So please, if you take anything away from what I am talking to you about tonight, is get involved and go vote because we have got to let our voices be heard. If we do not, it's going to be scary. And when teachers and Coach Amaya, you've always told me and stuff, when teachers get together, it, it's a scary thing for those that are going against teachers. But we have, whatever, whatever happened in, was it in the 80s?
I think it was 86, 88. And, and it, it's, that's a long story, but the, the thing about it is at that point, when, when educators were responsible for voting out everybody, the governor, everybody was voted out because they did something directly to teachers. They told us, yeah, you're certified, but you're going to have to take another test if you want to keep your job. So we rallied behind that. I mean, there was rallies, there was the, all kinds of things that I'd never been a part of and educators normally aren't. Educators are forgotten because we don't have the money to donate to these people. So they don't pay attention to educators. But think of the communities where an, an educational system, a public school system is not the largest employer in that town. Very few. There may be some somewhere, but when educators unite, when edu, forget about uniting, I don't want, I don't want to go that route. When educators vote and vote their heart and vote what's best for, for their situation, people are going to stand up and take notice. They did in 86 and they will again, but we haven't had the cumulative gumption to get out there and take care of things and just to go vote. Find out who represents your needs, what you want, what you need, find out. I, I never tell, somebody asked me, who should I vote for? I said, I'm not going to tell you who to vote for. If you don't, if you don't find out the situ, I will tell you who I am going to vote for and why, but it's up to you to decide. We have to, we, we somehow, we have to get that, that togetherness of just to go on out and vote and talking to people because it shouldn't happen.
That's right, that's right. So hopefully I've, I've sent the message out, I think, I hope.
I can't tell you how proud I am of this board and how you're, how willing, you're willing, I want to thank you for your willingness to stand up, to serve as advocates and to exercise, to have this scope of influence beyond the boundaries of our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So with that, I will be going up to Austin and, and representing and, and hopefully we can continue working on behalf of our students and public school education. And we will bring back the message to everyone so that hopefully we can, you know, get out there and do what we need to do. That concludes my report, sir.
Thanks, sir. We move on down to consent agenda.
That brings us to consent agenda, Roman numeral number nine. We have four consent agenda items. The first one is consider and approve minutes for meetings held on March 18th, 2024 and March 25th, 2024. Second, consider and approve agreements, contracts for CSP 23-24-24 Occupational Therapy Services. Also, number three, consider and ratify the Texas Education Agency Certification of Provision of Instructional Materials, TEAC's Certification 2425 as per TEA. And the last one for consider and approve agreements, contracts with independent contractors for professional learning services. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve consent agenda as posted.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving consent agenda items number one through four is read off of today's agenda, please raise your hand. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Action items, we have five action items tonight. Discuss and take action to approve budget amendment number eight for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve budget amendment number eight for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving budget amendment number eight for fiscal year 2023, 2024, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Number two, discuss and take action to approve a declaration that certain district vehicles are surplus and authorize administration to dispose of said vehicles as appropriate. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
Motion to approve, sir.
Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving a declaration that certain district vehicles are surplus and authorize administration to dispose of said vehicles as appropriate, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Number three, discuss and take action to approve the technology equipment purchases from purchasing cooperative vendors. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the technology equipment purchases from purchasing cooperative vendors, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Number four, discuss and take action to approve out-of-state student travel. A, CTE, Sea Perch Robotics Internationals, Maryland, May 31st through June 1st, 2024. Do I have a motion? Mr. Henderson?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the, make it approved to out-of-state student travel, CTE Sea Perch Robotics International, Maryland, May 31st through June 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving out-of-state student travel for Sea Perch Robotics Internationals, Maryland, May 31st through June 1st, 2024, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Number five, discuss and take action to approve superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 2024, 2025 school year. A, teachers. B, registered nurse. C, content specialist. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 2024, 2025 school year. A, teachers. B, registered nurse. C, content specialist. Please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Are any of the teachers here? Yes. If you can stand and be recognized and welcomed in joining the Falcon family. Thank you. Alrighty, we don't need to go into closed session in regards to any personnel recommendations and or approving recommendations, which brings us to announcements. Dr. Salasad?
Mr. Attorney, members of the board, just a reminder that we have a special call meeting on April 29th, primarily for bringing recommendations on property insurance, but we also are moving tonight's board training over to the 29th to, because there were some trustees that could not be here. Baseball, we're hosting San Benito at home on Tuesday, April 16th at 6:30 PM. And softball also has, is hosting Harlingen. So we'll have San Benito at, at the baseball field, Harlingen at the softball field. Both games start at 6:30 PM. Those are all the announcements we have.
Thank you, Dr. Salasad. It is 7:10 and I adjourn this meeting.